This time, we will go directly on the presentation of the proclamations. Uh, first item will be the educational incentive presentation. Mr. Klein, would you come forward, give your name and address?
Looks like we came in on budget. How, uh, and we even, uh, Weaver looking at, look at possible tax anticipation, though. What do we stand on that?
Um, I've done a preliminary worksheet, um, through August or through July, and so now I have to project to the end of the year, so we can determine the legal amount that we could borrow.
Okay. In the long months, September, October, November, December?
I plan to have it finished, uh, in fact, I've, um, sent it to, uh, some financial advisors to look at, to give me, you know, uh, ideas on what I need to do, and I plan to have it finished, you know, within the next couple of weeks.
Uh, Ms. Garrison, uh, when your, your, your summary and background statement says that general fund revenues were ninety-two percent of the budget, which is what we actually received, ninety-two percent of what we thought we would get, and we expended ninety percent of what we budgeted to spend, in, in dollars, what's that difference? I mean, 'cause we're looking at the overall budget, the full eighty million dollars, correct? Including the shares, the scores?
No, well, it's, it's just the general fund, but it's just thirty-nine million that we're looking at.
Mm-hmm.
So it's a, um, a difference of about a couple hundred thousand on the reports that you have.
We spent more than we took in by, on these preliminary reports, two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand dollars. But we will have invoices coming in that will be charged back to that, and the final reports won't be ready until the CAFR is prepared in November, December. But these are preliminary.
Right, there, there are a lot of adjustments that'll have to be made, lots of revenues and expenditures.
Yeah, I guess what I was confused is that if William says that we spent more, but it says here we spent less than we did in revenue, that's where I'm confused.
What I'm giving you is on the, um, is the actual percentage on this report that you have, and basically, our revenues came in under budget, um, not at budget, so they only came in at ninety-two percent, but then, on a good note, our expenditures came in under budget, only at ninety percent of what we had budgeted. So we did a very good job of, uh, holding the line on expenditures, it's just revenues did not come in, um, as predicted.
Reasons for that?
Uh, well, you know, if you look at the budget, or if you look at these percentage numbers, um, one of the big ones, well, it's not big, but one of the percentages that is way off is licenses and permits. Business licenses are down, um, businesses are going under, not renewing their licenses. Um, you know, there was a difference between the digest, and so taxes are off, um, sales taxes are off, everything is down.
Any other questions? If there are none, uh, entertain a motion to accept the financial report for the past twelve months ending June 30th, 2013, as presented.
Motion. Sir.
I have a motion by Commissioner Ray, and a second by Commissioner Gardner, to accept the, uh, approve the financial statement for the twelve months ending June 30th, 2013. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, show your hands, five zero. Thank you, Ms. Garrison. At this time, we'll have, uh, citizens' comments, we have one person signed, up to speak. Um, we'd like to ask speakers to sign up prior to the meeting, and provide their names, addresses, and topic, on the topic on which they will speak. Um, they must present all their comments to the board only. Speakers will be allotted three minutes to speak on their chosen topics, and the topic should relate to matters pertinent to the jurisdiction of this Board of Commissioners. No questions will be asked by any of the commissioners during citizens' comments. Outbreak from the audience will not be tolerated, and common courtesy and civility are expected at all times during the meeting. At this time, uh, I'd like to ask Mr. Dick Morrow, uh, who has signed up to come to the podium, give us your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Dick Morrow, my address is 263 West Chester Drive. I understand your financial situation and budgetary issues, uh, I sat in your seat as the county commissioner, and have dealt with the reality of constitutional officers and mandatory state service delivery with limited resources available. It's a difficult job, and I appreciate your challenges and the work you do. Recently, a comment was made that somehow the city and county should not be equal financial partners in support of our Disney Airport. Uh, that statement was made under a false premise that somehow the city was making utility profits, so this put the county at the disadvantage. Here are some facts to address those allegations. Uh, the city does not make a profit, Griffin is a not, is not a for-profit corporation, does not pay dividends, the city delivers services just as does the county, and uses multiple revenue streams to pay the cost of service delivery. We operate on a balanced budget, the same as Spaulding County. Most of our utilities break even, sewer and solid waste are two such examples, fees received equal cost. Only water and electricity have small net positive revenue, that, quote, profit, is used to help pay for city services, primarily police, fire, and streets. The city provides all fire and police protection to the airport without charge, it's a city service. Our police patrol the airport, investigate any crime, provide law enforcement as needed. Our fire department provides fire protection in response to any call. The direct cost for this is paid partially by any net utility revenue. At the current mileage rates, digest, Spaulding County collects forty-one thousand six hundred from airport property, Griffin collects about twenty-two-five, therefore, the county receives nineteen thousand more in property taxes from the airport than does the city, and remember, Spaulding gets about fifty-nine percent of all local sales taxes generated from airport businesses. Clearly, Spaulding County benefits much more from the airport tax revenues. Georgia House Bill 489 was passed to prevent double taxation on city residents, Spaulding 2012 net property tax digest was one point three four billion, Griffin's digest was eight hun- there was five hundred thirteen million, comprising thirty-seven percent of the county by total. That means thirty-seven percent of the county's property tax collections are from property owned within the city, therefore, city property taxpayers are paying not only the city's half of any airport subsidy, but they also pay thirty-seven percent of the county's share. Simply stated, the case can be made that the county financially benefits more than the city from the airport, but that notwithstanding, however, I believe we're fifty-fifty partners, regardless of how that would be proud of that partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen and ladies, I would like to, uh, review the minutes and entertain a motion to consider approval of the minutes of the following meetings, on July 15th, 2013, the extraordinary session, July 15th, 2013, the executive session, July 25th, 2013, the work session for financial policies and procedures, and July 25th, 2013, joint meetings of the House of Representatives.
Madam Chair, move the minutes identified to be approved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Ray, and a second by Commissioner Gardner, to approve the four seventy minutes, is there any discussion?
A second by Commissioner Miller.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I'm so sorry.
Um, a motion by Commissioner Ray, and a second by Commissioner Miller, to, uh, approve the four seventy minutes, is there any discussion now? Okay, there being none, all of them, favor, show your hands, five zero. Thank you. Uh, we have no consent agenda, and I believe we'll go directly to all business. Item one, discussion of the intergovernmental agreement with the City of Griffin for funding of the Griffin-Spaulding Airport Authority at the May 20th, 2013 meeting, and this is an item that Commissioner Miller asked to have brought up on the agenda for discussion.
I just, I mean, he, he gave us his pitch paper, and, you know, no Mr. Morrow knows what the city does, but I, I just don't think, you know, fifty-fifty split for the people that live in the county is fair, fair split. My suggestion would be a fifty-thirty split. See if they say a store more, that, that costs many bucks. You don't have store more than four hundred acres out there, more or less, when you get through with it.
I, you finished?
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't, I don't not agree with you. I'm, I'm, and this is respectfully to the city commissioners of Griffin, but, you know, I pay four or five dollars for yard waste pickup every month, I don't have yard waste to pick up every month. Sometimes I never have yard waste, and that's on my bill, and, you know, I, I know enough to know that this is not, I mean, maybe that the utilities is not created to, to be a for-profit, but they are, they get money, and they use it for other stuff, so in those sentiments, you know, we're looking at what's on the top of the surface. I, um, you know, I think that because we have, you know, already made an agreement with them, that we certainly should honor what we decided that we were gonna do, of course, unless we go back from this year, but I, I certainly think it weighs for us to really look at the facts, because you can make a lot of general conceptions, and the city won't know what it is that we do and we don't know, but, you know, generally speaking, um, I, I don't see them as two different things, you can't have the City of Griffin unless it's in Spaulding County, that's just how it is. So, um, in, in the services that we provide, that are open to the general public, doesn't matter if you're the city or the county, and I understand the whole concept behind, uh, Council Bill 49, and I also understand the concept behind, um, us looking at something different in our laws negotiations, and maybe that will be an avenue that we can look at some of these things more in detail, but clearly, I, I know the same thought process as that you are, I have some concerns that, uh, specifically, just in looking at, at the airport in general, not waiting anything else just at the airport, um, is that, um, you know, that we pay out X amount of dollars, and the city pays half of that, but we don't have a revenue generating stream, and when I say, no, you're not making a profit, but you're getting your money back, and that's where I am with that, and, you know, in our conversations about the new airport, we really agonize, I, I didn't, I didn't agonize about it, about whether or not we wanted to leave the airport in the county, or allow it to be annexed by the city. I mean, you know, my thought process is like, what's the big deal? Should we be the only one to collect revenue and taxes from whatever's out there? Allow the city to be able to do the same, but then, when you get to this other end, are we still gonna finance that, and, and you still get the string, so, from my opinion, I think it warrants some relooking at, but I think we should honor our contract that we have this year.
When do we sign, when, when do we sign the contract? I mean, you're gonna carry it over to authorities, so when, when's the contract been drawn?
It was May?
May twentieth?
It was in May, it was in May.
May twentieth, agenda, I believe it was approved forward.
Any other comments from, any other person? Is there a desire for, for anybody on this board to relook at this at some time?
Because it's such a big issue, I think, I think probably need to look at it.
Okay, uh, William, put that on the list of the things that we still need to look at. Um, I've never been to a loss negotiation, I've never been through a loss negotiation, I'm really not sure what happens, but I hear through the grapevine that some of this stuff can possibly be cleared up or better defined, so maybe we need to have that discussion, rather than specifically trying to pick the airport out and figure out if we're being guilty.
Well, there's obviously some clear, there is, there needs to be more clarity here, obviously, there is, some things are just not, from the city and county, just not quite together, I think, like you said, having a discussion of what, what the, what the issues are, and how we can actually bridge what revenues they bring in, what we don't, what we need to pay out, you know, all that kind of stuff, I think there just needs to be a little bit more clarity and understanding.
Madam Chairman, I think what you're talking about is the 489 discussions, the local option sales tax discussions, happen once every ten years, and so it'll be, um, twenty-twenty-two, uh, before we redo that, uh, the House Bill 489 has to be redone by, uh, twenty-seventeen, but this agreement that was signed is only for the existing airport funding, it is not for the new airport, it is only for the existing airport.
And the operations cost.
And the operations, all it does is put in, um, into an intergovernmental agreement, the process that's been in effect for over a dozen years.
And that we split with the city the deficit of the airport, not entirely.
Yeah, we understand that, we are understanding that, but, you know, even at the time when we discussed this, Commissioner Miller brought this issue up, and then subsequently, he talked about the fact that, you know, if we, even if we pay fifty-fifty on the deficit for the operations, if we're paying fifty thousand, and the city's paying fifty thousand, and the city's actually collecting fifty-nine thousand utilities, are we really paying the same thing? You know, so, I, I mean, I, that's where, kind of where I am. Um, yes, I, I forgot, we did do the loss negotiations, I forgot that because I was very unhappy with the decision, I just wanted to know it was convenient and easy that I had, because I didn't like how that explained, but, you know, majority of the rules, but, um, so if you guys really don't wanna discuss it, fine, if we got three people who want to discuss it further, I don't want us to create an, an, uh, an atmosphere that we're trying to fight with the city, because we've gone a long way to mend a bunch of fences, but I think they should understand what our concerns are, so that it's not misconstrued that we are, um, that we are just picking, picking at every little thing, because if they have, know that we, it is a real concern for us if it can be addressed completely, then we're gonna put it bad.
And it's not meaningful, and these people are calling me, telling me this, they're concerned about it, they're concerned about being forced, airport being forced down its throat to start with it, not being able to vote on it, then they, I'm not happy with the way the money's gotta be spent up, if they're gonna force it on us, and they think that this should be done differently.
Amen. And to, to properly look at this, I mean, it affects the loss, it affects the service delivery program between the city and the county, uh, which is House Bill, uh, 489, we, it, it has more accomplished than just the airport, like you said, and we've gotta look at the service deliveries of the city, the county, make sure there's no double taxation, make sure everybody's in, uh, we've got all the services included, uh, and then, at that point in time, we can have an intelligent deci- an intelligent discussion with the city about what's what, who's who, and why, why.
Well, you know, I agree with you, I really do, but, you know, what Mr. Morrow has brought to us tonight is basically a, a response to Commissioner Miller's concern, and it basically says, no, you guys get more than us, this is not the kind of report we need, we need a, so, what's your concern, da-da-da-da-da-da-da, okay? So as a city resident, I'm not feeling that you don't make a, a profit, because I know that you take X amount of dollars from your MEAD fund and put it to your general fund, so I know you got some extra, so what I'm saying, I agree with you, this needs to be a discussion that we have, we need to let them know our concerns, and I don't think our concerns are really about fifty thousand dollars, I think it's about a bigger picture. So, back to, did you get that, Ricky, that we need to have a discussion with the city, so that we can kind of, and, you know, I, you know, I understand your concern, and I appreciate bringing it to us that you're constituents, but I don't know yet that that's, some parts of that's not gonna come to fruition. Um, and have a discussion about this topic, then we'll go on to topic number two. Consider approval on the first reading of an ordinance amending the Code Spaulding County Part VII, am I there?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, New Business, sorry, guys. Item one, consider approval of rental, rental request from TruVine Fellowship Holiness Church to utilize the parking lot adjacent to the Spaulding County Courthouse Annex for a new car show to be held on October the fifth, 2013. Do you have that, please?
Yes, ma'am, uh, that came to us last year, they did utilize on the weekend for a car show, we do ask them to require the same certificate of insurance that we require of anyone else, and we did charge a hundred and fifty dollar fee for using the parking lot, I'm not sure, is anyone here from TruVine?
Yes, he is.
Okay. If y'all have any questions, uh, we recommend approvals if, with the payment of the fee and the certificate of insurance. Mr. Weaver?
Yeah. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Pastor Weaver, I'm pastor of TruVine Church, and we did use the parking lot last year for a car show, a fundraiser, and a community event, uh, we, we're new, actually new to the, uh, Griffin community, uh, we've been here nine years now, uh, and, uh, and it's, it's, uh, as I say, the community, uh, project at the fundraiser for the church.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion, second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gardner, and a second by Commissioner Ray to approve the rental request from TruVine Holiness Fellowship Holiness Church to utilize the back parking lot adjacent to Spaulding County Courthouse Annex for a car show to be held on October fifth, 2013. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, show your hands, five zero, thank you. Item number two of New Business, consider approval on first reading of an ordinance amending the Code Spaulding County Part VII, Chapter One, Section Seven dash one thousand and two, relating to speed limits on specific county roads by adding Brentwood Drive from Carver Road to the Dead End, and Brentwood Circle from Brentwood Drive to the Dead End to be posted as twenty-five miles per hour.
Commissioner Miller had requested this, the sheriff recommended it, and, uh, we prepared the ordinance.
William?
Sir?
Could I ask you something else, too?
Yes, sir.
I, I don't, that street is so short, you know, twenty-five miles an hour, I'm just wanting to the entrance to it, could you put children playing, I mean, look, there are lots.
Yes, sir.
Could they put them, you know, when they enter, the twenty-five miles an hour, if you're going twenty-five miles an hour, and they dodge out in front of cars, for people parking the street, street out there, I just think it would be a, a safer issue.
Would you put those up, too?
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Gardner, and a second by Commissioner Johnson, to approve, uh, on first reading an ordinance amending the Code of Spaulding County, Part VII, Chapter One, Section Seven dash one, zero, zero, two, relating to speed limits on a specific count, on specific county roads by adding Brentwood Drive from Carver Road to the Dead End, and Brentwood Circle from Brentwood Drive to the Dead End, to be posted at twenty-five miles per hour, with signage added for children playing. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, show your hands, five zero. Item number three, uh, consider approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Spaulding County and Fayette County for the replacement of the West McIntosh Bridge, will you address that?
Yes, ma'am, we've been talking for several years about this, finally got everything with DOT lined up, and this is the final agreement, this is with, uh, between Spaulding County and Fayette County, for a fifty-fifty basis on repairs and maintenance of the bridge, um, five hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars is Spaulding County's portion, and the grand total for the bridge. I believe it's about a three-million-dollar bridge.
I think about two-point-three, two-point-seven.
Two-point-three, but, uh, Spaulding and Fayette County, uh, particularly, have to acquire the right-of-way and relocate the utilities on their portion, Spaulding County's actually got about sixty-some odd percent of the right-of-way, uh, on that bridge, but Fayette's willing to split it fifty-fifty with us, and, uh, that bridge is a thoroughfare from Spaulding County into Fayette County, and vice versa, and, uh, we recommend approval. This is a two-thousand-and-eight SPOLOST project.
Madam Chair, I'd like to approve the intergovernmental agreement between Spaulding County and Fayette County for the replacement of the West McIntosh Road Bridge.
Okay, um, I have a motion by Commissioner Ray.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Miller, to approve the intergovernmental agreement between Spaulding County and Fayette County for the replacement of the West McIntosh Road Bridge. Is there any discussion?
It has also been reviewed by the county attorney and Anthony, so, uh, county attorney agrees, and, uh, made a few changes, uh, and Anthony's looked over the cost estimates, and all the numbers match, uh, the DOT estimates.
Um, William, is this one, is this the bridge that got washed out, what, eight, nine, ten years ago, when the?
This one didn't get washed out, it did have, in the flood of ninety-four, I remember going over it, and the water was, uh, over the bridge, it was coming over slats and down into the bridge, so, uh, they're gonna raise it significantly, they're gonna redo both twenty and thirty feet. It is significantly higher.
I mean, I remember one of those bridges was closed, you couldn't.
It was closed for a long time, because we had to have all the pilings re-inspected, because it's such a long bridge, and there wasn't piling damage, but it, it wasn't washed, completely washed out like others.
Any other questions? There being none, all those in favor of a motion to, uh, approve that agreement, show your hands, five zero. Item number four, consider approval of tran- for transmission of the Spaulding County CIE.
Short-term work program?
Short-term work, yeah, uh, uh, short-term work program, annual update to the Three Rivers Regional Development Center and Department of Community Affairs for compliance review.
Madam Chair, this is an annual transmittal that we have to do every year, in the fact that we are a team that takes impact fees, uh, this year, we're way ahead of the game, and have gone through the projects very meticulously, and kind of organized everything, moved out projects that have been completed, and, uh, put other projects, especially into kind of a tiered process of, kind of, that we can immediately get, working on, get accomplished, and kind of on the mid-range, and a little bit further out, so, uh, we are all set to transmit, basically, what this is, and we have to get a, uh, a resolution from y'all before we can send it over for review, and at that time, ARC, DCA, the other review, assume approval, then we'll be back for, after y'all for adoption.
It's a three-tier process every year, and we have to get your permission to submit it, we have to get their blessing, and then we have to get your approval on the final plan to submit to ARC.
So that's comprehensive improvement?
Capital improvement.
Capital improvement.
And then the other short-term work program.
Element and short-term work program, I, I Brian just couldn't, I get that together, sorry. Um, does anybody have any questions with Chad? If you have any questions, I'll report with a request, metal.
Certainly, detailed report.
Madam Chair, motion to approve the annual update, uh, at CIE STWP, annual update to the Three Rivers Regional Development Center and Department of Community Affairs for compliance review.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gardner, and a second by Commissioner Ray, to approve, uh, for transmission of this Spaulding County CIE STWP annual update to the Three Rivers Regional Develops- Development Center and Department of Community Affairs for compliance review. Any other questions? There being none, all those in favor, show your hands. There being none, all those in favor, show of hands, five zero. Item number five, consider request of the Griffin-Spalding Transportation Planner to enter into an agreement for professional services with the URS Corporation to conduct the Federal Transit Administration-funded Griffin-Spalding Transit Feasibility Study. Anthony is here to address that.
Chair. You have some questions, do you have... This year's been a four-year process to get this transit feasibility study in place. We had to... it was first identified in the county's comprehensive transportation planning process. Over the years, we've heard it during the ALCI studies and North Hill Street and various other public meetings, the need for transit. And this has been a four-year process, you know, to get the city and county on board to agree to provide the twenty percent match, get ARC on board to agree to act as a pass-through for FTA funds because you have to have a single person or staff, a couple of staff in place that that's all they do is contract management and reporting to FTA. We don't have that, I'm it.
It's on me. You're doing a good job.
Thank you, thank you. And this is, as you know, the city and county agreement to do the agreement to provide the match of thirty thousand dollars, or fifteen apiece. But with this contract, it came in under the allocated amount, so it'll probably come out to somewhere of ten thousand apiece. Because the agreement was only... this contract is only about ninety-nine thousand dollars.
Does anyone have any questions, Anthony?
The price, ma'am, we got a page coming down, Anthony, so what you're saying would be ten thousand dollars instead of fifteen?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, based on the... it was a selective process. They submitted a bid to do the work, and they came in... This was a low bid, and it's also well-established, I don't know if it will fund URS corporations. I think we got a good team on board at a good price. So it will be ten thousand dollars apiece instead of fifteen because we were approved through ARC for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar study, and this one will be a hundred.
Anthony, where is URS located out of?
They're out of Atlanta, but they're a national corporation, offices all over.
I asked most of my questions while we were doing it generally because I really thought that, I thought that feasibility study was just for, like determining whether or not we need transit from one side of town to the other. But the feasibility study is to determine whether or not we need maybe like a Greta bus or...
It's going to look at all modes, all modes, whether we tie it into a proposed commuter rail or whether...
Sidewalk, bike trail?
Well, yeah, you have to get to and from stations, so it'll look at connecting, you know, where the population centers are and the employment centers, and making sure connections are in place.
Will this address the connectivity, connectivity of like having streets? We got streets here in Griffin, and then they go into the county, and somewhere between them, there's a dirt road, and then on the other side, there's paving.
Well, with the, if, the study is basically going to look at about five options. One would be fixed route. If this community has the population and residential density and employment density to support a fixed route, or if it's just a desire of the, you know, the leadership of the city and county to have some type of circling or fixed route in place, they'll look at that. They'll also take a look at our existing system. You see the small buses running around? That's called demand response, it's the fifty-three eleven. But if we're not ready for a fixed route at this time, we can take our federal fifty-three oh seven funds, which that's what this study is being paid for by, and we can roll it into that program and beef it up and put it on a fixed route, but it'll still be able to deviate from that route if someone calls in and schedules ahead of time.
And how long is this study?
This study, it'll probably be about eight to twelve months.
If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request by the Griffin-Spalding Transportation Planner to enter into an agreement for professional services with the URS Corporation to conduct the Federal Transit Administration-funded Griffin-Spalding Transit Feasibility Study.
Madam Chair, motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Gardner and a second by Commissioner Miller to approve the, or said motion. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, show of hands, five zero. Thank you, Anthony, and you do a great job, not a good job, a great job.
Keep saving us money.
Item number six, consider declaring surplus and authorize transfer to the City of Jonesboro Police Department, two vehicles from the Spalding County Sheriff's Department. William, will you address that?
Yes, ma'am. Sheriff's Department has received their allocation of vehicles and has removed all the county lights and sirens and shotgun rags, etc., radios, and passed them down to others to be used and had a surplus, I think there's about five surplus vehicles that have not been used for parts yet, that are currently still in running shape, although might only run to the county line. So got a call from former Spalding County employee Frank McAllard, who's now the police chief of Jonesboro, and much like what we did for, I believe it was the City of Meansville, take a minimum price, two to five hundred dollars for these units, and transfer them to the City of Jonesboro for their use. They have people budgeted, I'm told, but they won't be able to get vehicles, new vehicles until next year, so they're hoping that this will possibly help them through this time period.
William, if we, if we auction those vehicles off, what would be the, what do you guys think would be the dollar value?
The last time we did that on GovDeals, we got anywhere from a low of fifty dollars.
High of about twelve.
To the high of about twelve hundred, with one that only had eighty thousand miles on it, so... These have considerably more than that, these have over a hundred and fifty, but they do still run. A lot of the older ones, we had not bid in such a long time that they became a disrepair, and they had been what they call parted out. Instead of, when we had a wrecked vehicle, we would go get a quarter panel off one or a door off one, or a hood off one, or a front grille, and things like that. And we were going to try with these others to do a little bit better and see what we can get. But anywhere from two fifty to twelve hundred is what we would expect.
Any question for, for the...
Per vehicle.
Sheriff King has approved this, right?
Yes, we have worked with Sheriff Ann Gibson. They have reviewed all the vehicles, and they do, I think, have five that they are not in need of, and I think two of these, or maybe three of them, still run, so...
Madam Chair, move to surplus and transfer two vehicles to the City of Jonesboro Police Department, Spalding County Sheriff's Department.
Motion by Commissioner Ray and a second by Commissioner Johnson to declare a surplus and to authorize a transfer to the City of Jonesboro Police Department, two vehicles from the Spalding County Sheriff's Department. Any other discussion? All those in favor, show of hands, five zero. Item number seven, consider setting a date and time for a workshop to complete review of a proposed financial policy, Mr. Peter.
Okay, I had recommended mistakenly August the twenty-sixth, thinking that our zoning meeting was August the twenty-sixth, but I believe it's August twenty-second.
Okay.
But August twenty-sixth is a Monday, I think I was confused. But generally, the chairman has off on Mondays, and that's when we had reviewed it before, and that was just a suggested date. Anyone have any other?
I have no problem with that date. I think you just need to figure out two hours, but we can get through it in six days.
Yes, sir.
Anticipate, try and finish.
Maybe we start at, well, we started at two, and we had that other meeting at four. If we start at one, we don't have any other meetings that night.
Yeah.
Yet.
Would it make from nine to have it before our normal meeting?
That'd be a really long day. That's the nineteenth, if you wanted to do it then.
The nineteenth of August?
Yes.
Did we have any other dates on here that we needed to look at? I thought we had something else that we, that was, that we had discussed that we were supposed to be...
Yes, ma'am, the evaluation of the county manager and a follow-up retreat. So all three of these are dates to set.
There was something else.
It was the budget.
Statistical strategic planning. We, we, I think I had requested that we look at, we were discussing the... There were three items that you had requested to have an agenda, and I'm not sure for some reason why we couldn't get two of them. But we had talked at the last meeting about...
Commissioner Ray requested?
Yeah, you sent an email in.
He did, one of those was the financials for the end of the year, which was done tonight. And the other two...
Was the, to discuss setting a date for this strategic plan for the financial comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan.
Yeah, but that's something we need to do after the retreat, really, to get some goals to plug in. That's not, that's not an overnight thing that's going to happen.
No, I, I don't, I don't think so, but that, that was one of the things that I had requested, so I don't, I don't know. Maybe you can enlighten me, why do you think it's something we need to discuss after the retreat?
To get more goals and objectives. That long-term policy...
Well, I mean, my understanding was that we were going to start looking at working on our money-saving efforts pretty quick. So we had already discussed some things that each of us thought we could look at, and then we were going to set some goals as to where we're going to be at the end of the year in terms of what we want our fund balance to be, when we want to be able to tell taxpayers we're going to try to work, make the digest go down, and that's what we discussed.
Yes, ma'am, we, we had talked about combining the budget calendar with the digest adoption calendar.
And establishing goals this year, two and five years.
So...
Comes back to the strategic.
I think that if we're going to have, set a retreat date, that should be a work session for that.
Because our goals will support the plan.
Yeah, right, because we, we can't really, unless we set some goals, we can't come up with the details.
I agree, same.
Okay, so, we hadn't gotten to that part yet, but we'll, we'll get that on there too.
I mean, we've got to set those other two dates too, so do y'all want to look at those around that same time, or... Because we've got follow-up retreat, and let's see what days, can't remember what days we recommended on those.
Close in September. About August.
Follow-up retreat in August?
August twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh, twenty-three, twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh.
You talking about the retreat or talking about financial plan?
Okay. Actually, all, the next three items were all set dates. Twenty-three, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh are suggested dates for the retreat. The suggested date for the financial policies was the twenty-sixth, so if you accept that one, then you mark that one off the retreat. And then the last one is the evaluation of the county manager, and I believe Chairman Flowers Tyler wanted to get that done before the end of the month too.
Okay, so let's, let's backtrack. I don't think that we should probably do the evaluation when we're doing our workshop. How do you guys feel about that?
Needs its own time.
Right. But I do think, rather than having multiple meetings to discuss these items here, that we should just pick one day and do it work until we get to the twenty-sixth. I mean, we got...
So the twenty-sixth, start in the morning, finish financial policies and procedures, and then go to retreat, follow-up?
But, yeah, but, and I think that we need to include the setting, setting the parameters and the goals for our, our, at least for our financial plans in the next three hundred sixty-five days.
Under, yes, ma'am.
Under the retreat.
Yes, ma'am.
Agenda. I mean, I don't think that we have anything else, but does that work for y'all? Because I mean, it's all these different, look, that, you can't come that day.
Twenty-sixth, I'm shot.
Okay, well, let's do something else then.
Twenty-third?
I'm open, twenty-third's open, but anything with the twenty-sixth, I'm shot.
Twenty-third's open, right?
Yes, sir. That'll make it up.
But then again, I can make my, I've already got notes on the financial, on the financial thing, that's my problem.
Yeah, but we need to...
Yeah, but we were going to combine everything in one day.
Um, but, is, can, can the twenty-third work for y'all? It's not my day off, but I, I think I can move something around. So twenty-third, we did it.
Start at nine?
Thank you.
And just to clarify, the twenty-third, at nine o'clock, we'll do financial policies and procedures, and then once we finish that, we'll immediately go into the follow-up retreat and financial goals for one, two, and five years. One, two, and whatever year. Future. Okay? And so the only one left now is the evaluation of the county manager, and that just has to be done before Sep... well...
We don't have a meeting on September, or we may not have a meeting on September yet.
You, according to my contract, you have to notify, or either party has to notify by September thirtieth, if I intend not to renew, so you just need to do that before September thirtieth.
Why don't we look at the summary of the first of September? Is everybody going to be in town, or can you get a spot?
What about the ninth? You all going, the ninth, that's actually Labor Day. We don't have a meeting until the sixteenth.
I could do that.
No, we don't have a meeting the sixteenth, it's the twenty-third.
September would be the sixteenth, but the ninth works.
And so then, William can ask, well, we can discuss that at the retreat and how we'll go about getting, being able to get a...
Bill's already set that together.
Okay. Morning would be good for me, I mean, Raymond, how does your work, how does your work begin?
I'm ten. Excuse me, ten?
September clock, okay, that'll work.
September ninth's ten a.m.
Gotcha. So, you see, we got the financial policy and procedures, we got the evaluation, we got the follow-up retreat. Now, let's go.
I have a question with that one, boy.
Yes.
You know, my, you know, an evaluation...
Normally, you know, in an evaluation, we're going back and going off memory of what's happened in the past year. Now, everybody remembers all the bad stuff, but we never remember what he's done well over the past year or what the county's done well, and I'd like for William to put something together and email that out, of, you know, the good stuff or the things that we've accomplished this past year.
And we generally will cover those things in the retreat.
I'll have that in the retreat too, so.
Okay.
Not a problem.
It's just, those things are always forgotten in an evaluation.
Remind me when we have a retreat meeting to make a comment about that because, you know, on the evaluations, there is no place to say, really, what are you impressed by, what thing? It's always?
Last two items are the last one.
Okay, all right. That works, yeah. Okay, are we, we good?
Okay, so number seven, if we can get a motion for 9 a.m. on the 23rd.
I make the motion. I have.
Second.
My name is Paul.
Have a motion by Commissioner Miller and a second by Commissioner Ray to set the date for the, and for a workshop for proposed financial policies and procedures on August?
23rd.
August 23rd or 9 o'clock?
2013 at 10 a.m.
9:00.
9:00 a.m.
Were you injecting that?
I'll bring a cup.
9:00 a.m. Any discussion? All those in favor, show of hands, five zero. Item number eight, consider setting a date and time for the annual evaluation of the county manager and entertain a motion to, to approve?
September 9th, 10 a.m.
September 9th at 10 a.m.
Second. What was our motion?
I think, oh, did I make a motion? Okay, a motion by Commissioner Gardner and a second by Commissioner Ray to set September the 9th at 10 a.m. for the annual evaluation of the county manager. Item number nine, consider setting a date and time for a fall follow-up retreat. Entertain a motion to set the date and time for the follow-up retreat on September the 23rd?
No, August the 23rd.
August 23rd, also, somebody else need to make this motion. August the 23rd at 9 o'clock.
I'll say it's not gonna be 9 o'clock, because we got another one.
Immediately preceding.
Immediately preceding a 9 o'clock meeting.
Thank you. Previous meeting.
Preceding.
Yeah, not.
Somebody made this motion, don't let me do it.
I second Paul's motion. I make the motion of what we can see it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Miller and a second by Commissioner Ray to approve setting the date of August 23rd following the first meeting of the financial policy procedure to have our retreat. There any discussion?
Couple questions.
All those in favor, five zero.